Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward abides by the Nebraska Openings Act and conducts business. A copy of the Nebraska Openings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clutch record, and our absentee limit remarks for five minutes. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine, by whom, any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Lacy, Beck, here. Camper, Fritz, here. Pike, here. Singleton, Schmidt, here. Hans, here.
Isle number one, consideration of approval of draft minutes of May fifth, twenty fifteen.
Move approval?
Give a motion and a second, and then further discussion. Sing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Beck, Fritz, Pike, Schmidt, and Hans, motion.
Isle number two, consideration of consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Give a motion and a second, and then further discussion. Sing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Hans, Schmidt, Beck, Pike, Fritz, Beck, for security.
Isle number three, this is a public hearing at seven P M. Consideration of that increment financing TIF project. This is for Bottle Rocket Brewing LLC. I believe Andrew Willis is here, as well as Jonathan Jenk, to answer any questions.
Good evening, Mayor Reitmeyer, council members. Andrew Willis, Klein Williams. The application and redevelopment project they have in front of us today is the redevelopment is Bottle Rocket Brewing LLC. And the project would be a micro brewery of essentially the manufacturing and a taproom for the craft, for their craft beer label in the old flower mill on Fifth Street. It's essentially the manufacturing facility, taproom, tasting room, potentially event space. And first go through the application they submitted. Again, I guess the kind of the main pieces, the goal of this project is keep the historic structure, that nineteen forty-six building, and then add on a steel and building beyond, kind of attached to it and around it. So incorporating the historic piece into the new facility to support the manufacturing and the event space. Essentially, when it's built, it'll be about sixty-six hundred square feet. Total costs are just under one point four million, one point three eight million dollars, between acquisition of the land, some of the site development, one of the big pieces is the demo, there's that concrete bin behind the building. And get some site work to get the building ready to be, the site ready to be developed. About a million dollars to build a new structure, the attachment onto the old building. And then the other fees involved in that development gets about one point three eight million dollars. The estimated value of completion, this is based on consultation with the county assessor, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. So the current valuation, sixty-four thousand, gives us a nice increment of value, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Generating over thirteen thousand dollars a year. The TIF request they had made on their application was a hundred and ninety thousand, a little over a hundred and ninety thousand. As we'll get to here in a second, our cost benefit analysis, we're actually looking at more of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So based on that, there's a little bit of gap in the financing that they understand they'll have to adjust for, about fifty-five thousand dollars, but that's what this project can actually support, more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar TIF request. It'll, the goal is that it all completed this year, so twenty sixteen would be the effective date. And again, they made a request for multiple eligible items, site acquisition, demolition, part of that stuff, the site prep work. Part of what they're gonna do is some high energy efficiency enhancements to the project, and some utility extensions. The, one of the main things they need is a lot more utility, it's a, see, a higher user of utilities to do the manufacturing. They need some different equipment in there. But a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in TIF, we basically took the first two off their list, the site acquisition and the site preparation and demolition, which more than exceeded what's available. So we just left at those two as we go through our documentation. But they identified a bunch more additional eligible uses as well that we just exceeded what they could, this project could support. So that was the application they submitted. Looking at our cost benefit analysis, building off of that, again, about one point three eight million dollars for this whole project. With that, so the eligible uses, again, the site acquisition's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the site prep demo. And I think that includes the demo as well, the site prep's twenty-one thousand dollars. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, already exceeding that amount. It's a pretty big increase, going from sixty-four, sixty-five thousand to eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, an increase of about thirteen times the valuation. So while they'll be divided for fifteen years, it's gonna see a pretty good increase. And as we always see in these typically, you're gonna see the personal property tax increase immediately, as well as sales tax on the merchandise and beer there from the brewery. There's a, you know, the main piece of this is gonna be the manufacturing, that's the, you know, as well as the taproom and the tasting room. But the actual brewing of the beer is the main piece of this, the primary driver of this business. There's no other breweries in the city. There's a couple that are identified in their plan, you know, obviously their closest competitors are Lincoln, even Omaha. Based on their plan, they looked at, you know, immediate creation of about four to ten jobs. And then ultimately growing, if the plan kind of fulfills expectations, ten to twenty fold and part-time jobs. Kind of, in addition to, they're, the kind of, the project will maintain that historical aspect by maintaining that building, the grainery that exists there. It's also got a tourism component with the craft brewery and the event center space. And they're also very emphatic on their energy efficiency upgrades and doing that, which kind of has a positive effect on the kind of resources and the environment as well. All in all, looking at that, and again, I think I had mentioned it, there's, the current building now is about eight little under nineteen hundred square feet, eighteen hundred eighty. The additional construction's a little over five thousand square foot. So the total project's gonna be about six thousand six hundred eighty square foot building, wrapping around the current site. And so that, you know, look at that, that was kind of the cost benefit analysis, looking at it, it all looked pretty good. We didn't see any major, major issues. The CRA has been, we just went in front of the CRA, and everything was approved and the plan and recommended. And the planning commission also was the redevelopment plan, and made the recommendation to this council to approve. The amendment to the redevelopment plan. Again, this, the main pieces we've identified in that redevelopment plan for this project. They've got that exterior grain bin and concrete that needs to be removed in order to even develop the site. And the infrastructure right now is inadequate to support a modern business, particularly this with a heavy manufacturing piece. Those kind of, that's gonna require that significant upfront, upfront cost. It's in the redevelopment area, so it's a kind of a, you know, good, this is one of those project sites that needs the assistance. And but for this TIF, the redevelopmentists have said they can't, can't make those costs work. Looking at the exhibit B, kind of the statutory elements on our plan amendments, going through the list, there's not, again, not a whole lot here. This is a, it's privately, it's a privately owned right now, and the Bottle Rocket Brewing LLC is under contract to acquire that property. It's a commercial property, so there's no population density issues as far as with this project. Land coverage, it meets and exceeds all the land coverage ratios and zoning requirements. Don't anticipate any adverse impacts on the streets, good streets around there. There's, I was confirmed, there's no parking requirements there, but there will be parking on that south side of the building anyway, so there'll be some adequate parking for this, for this building. As I said, it's a commercial zoning district, this is a permitted use. Redevelopers obviously handling all their, they've, they've been approved for the brewer's permit from the Federal Trade and Tax Bureau. I did not know that was the first step involved, before they even go to the state liquor commission. So they've been approved for that, and now they are currently getting their license at the state level from the state liquor control commission. So, but all that obviously is handled by them, it's their requisite to deal with. And so that's, that's what's identified in the redevelopment plan. There's any questions yet? I'll take them, otherwise I'll just keep going through the redevelopment agreement.
Any questions at this time?
Andrew, how's the repayment on this? I mean, I know it's fifteen years. But, I mean, we've got a huge difference in taxes there, thirteen grand.
Yeah.
And essentially, they're asking for a hundred and thirty-five, you know? So not including interest, I mean, that's just, that's ten years.
Yeah, and ideally, so what we've done here is, so with that thirteen grand, if you, I'm using an estimated rate right now of five and a half percent interest. They haven't, nothing's been formalized with the lender yet. Obviously, until this is approved, they don't go through that step. But if there's, but you're looking at five and a half percent on that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar loan today over the fifteen-year amortization, that's where that comes out. It's actually.
I mean, I guess my question is, is it gonna make it fifteen years, or is it gonna be off the books before the fifteen years though?
Well, if it, if it stays at eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars as an assessed value, and it's a five and a half percent interest, that, this should break out to fifteen years. Now, there is some plan that's not part of this project, but they, you know, talked about additional improvements on that property if things go well, which obviously would cause an increase in the valuation, then it would come off the books sooner. But at that value, it's kind of set up to be, that's what, that's what supports the fifteen-year limit, was that a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar one. Yep.
Andrew, before you continue, this is, we do have a public hearing on this. I would like to have opportunity to open the public hearing. Would the public like to comment on this item? One once? Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this. Andrew, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Any other questions from the council? Otherwise, we have, I believe, item E, which is the resolution approving the redevelopment plan amendment, and then item F, which is a second resolution approving the redevelopment agreement, and the issuance of TIF indemnity for the redevelopment project. Are any questions about those items?
Yeah, do each one separate?
I believe we do need to do them separately, yes. So the first one is item E.
I want to introduce the resolution.
Okay, the resolution has been introduced, and it's designated as resolution number twenty fifteen dash eleven. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Second.
Give a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, motion, Lacy, Beck, Fritz, Pike, Schmidt, Hans, motion.
All right, thank you. Would someone like to introduce the resolution under F?
All right.
All right, the resolution has been introduced, and it's designated as resolution number twenty fifteen dash twelve. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Don't move.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Hans, Fritz, or Hans, Schmidt, Pike, Fritz, Beck, Lacy, here.
Thank you, thank you, Andrew. Isle number four, this is also a public hearing at seven P M. To amend and update zoning map to include airport overlay. John Hughes.
Do you remember a couple meetings ago, we had the amendment to the comprehensive plan to include our airport overlay district? This is the accompanying map that goes with it. The big issue here is the addition of the airport overlay district, which shows the flight paths. For the discussion, it's been a couple of years since we've had an official zoning map update. And so this is kind of falls in line with the updating of our different zoning and annexations, as well as the airport overlay district. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for John? This is also a public hearing, so I'll take a moment to open this up to the public for any questions or comments. If the public wish to question or comment. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this. John, may I continue? Do you have anything else to add?
The only other thing is, is we also updated our two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. So it reflects current values that were taken in place.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I would ask someone to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
All right. In ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been direct by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero nine. And the title is hereby approved, I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
Second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, motion, Lacy, Beck, Fritz, Pike, Schmidt, Hans, motion.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero nine. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Second. Second.
Give a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Sing none. The question is, shall ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero nine be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, motion, Hans, Schmidt, Pike, Fritz, Beck, fifty, motion.
This is the only ordinance for this evening, so I'll need one final motion to make this ordinance a part of the permanent record.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Lacy, Beck, Fritz, Pike, Schmidt, Hans, motion.
All right, thank you, John. Isle number five, this is a consideration of proposal regarding planting of trees in city right-of-way. We have the tree board chairman, Matt Strice, in here to present to the council.
Hi, everybody, I'm Matt. I live at ten thirty-nine North Fifth Street, Ward Two. Councilman Chris there. Thank you for your time in bringing up this subject. What, one of the, the main issue or the problem that we see is, and we didn't plan this, but if you saw in the Lincoln Journal, this Sunday in the Prairie, Prairie Lane section, we talked about, there was a little article about using orange, orange trees in our cities to help, help cool in the summertime, and these streets shade trees. And so, just to give you a little background of why we're here, the, the tree board was created, well, we've been a Tree City USA for thirty-two years. And I think one of the requirements of being a Tree City USA is that you have a tree board. And one of the functions that a tree board can do for a city council is to help solve disputes on city property and city right-of-ways between landowners and city, city uses, you know, utilities and functions. We also participate with the women's club and the schools' fourth graders in town for Celebrate Arbor Day. And we go to Lincoln and participate in Tree City USA activities. And we listen to annual reports on the health of tree species from the Nebraska Forest Service and statewide arboretum. So, so we've been around a long time, and we've always wanted to promote and help the city residents with planting the right variety of trees and getting trees planted. And a long time ago, the tree board came up with, and this is really according, relief program. It's R E L E A F, okay? And there's been an application, so if you want to go fifty-fifty with a city on a tree, and you're a landowner and plant a tree, a street tree in the right-of-way, you can take this application up to Maryland, and the, the tree board is kind of on the hook to come up with a species that you can plant, and there's a quantity and a species, and you can apply for the relief money. And I think every year we probably targeted, I know that Maryland's not here, I don't know, I don't know if Bonnie knows, but I would say maybe we would target seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars if we really had big participation. Well, we, we just haven't had the participation that we'd like to have in this. So we, we put our heads together again, and we've tried to, we've tried to dovetail on the city's newsletter. Well, Megan Boggs helped us a lot last year with, if you look at the, our, the face of our, our front page of our website, you can click on, oh, that's not it, sorry. If you go to the city's website, I thought I had a little screenshot of it. You would see the mayor's photo and all the ways you can click on the, on the council meetings and stuff. And there's a little tree in the lower right-hand corner. If you click on the little hyperlink there, it'll get you right into the relief application. Still, we don't have a lot of buy-in. So our discussions seem like they always kind of get to at our tree board meetings of, well, we feel like there's parts of town where we've offered these things to city residents, and they're just, and we're really not catching much steam with it and stuff. We're not getting a lot of momentum. So, you know, being a tree board and stuff, what we would like to see in the newer parts of town, and in some of the newer developments and stuff, is to have landowners and people, you know, planting oaks and maples in ten, twenty, thirty years down the road, planting enough big trees to where we start getting the canopies like we have where I live on my, on Fifth Street and stuff. And, you know, like going from the hospital north on Columbia, or around the courthouse and all the big canopies, where we have a lot of shade and stuff, and it really helps with the beautification of town, and it helps with, you know, you know, keeping, keeping streets from getting too hot, and having, having areas where we're not getting enough shade into the, into the town. So it's kind of an energy conservation thing, too. So I asked the mayor, or basically to represent the rest of my tree board, which is, Ken's meeting is here, we have Chuck Madsky, Larry Goldsmith, Jr., and Brian Flessner. And then Dean is our council rep, and Dean's a really good, really supportive council rep. And Mel Aldrich is our city employee rep, and a lot of support from Dean and Mel. And Dave Stewart was before, and he was very supportive, too. You know, we kind of sit around, we go, gosh, how are we gonna convince people to plant big shade trees, and take advantage of some of the programs that we have available? So, you know, you kind of sit there, and you get all stirred up, and everybody gets, you know, their courage up. It's like, let's go down to city hall, we're gonna take over, you know, tree board's taking over town, we're gonna plant trees where they need to go. Well, that's, that's all good until, you know, somebody has to come in front of the council and the mayor and really reason with, you know, what is our function, how do we do this? You know, we, we never wanna do laws or make laws that are gonna have, if you had some crazy people on the tree board, and they just started planting trees willy-nilly all over the place, that'd be bad. So we're good, we're good, I have to say, with Mel Aldrich's support. And personally, myself, I've worked with John for a long time, I've worked with Larry Ruthur and Jared Hookston. I don't know Tim Riptig that well, but we're, we're very good about working with utilities. But we don't wanna have the council create some law that when we're all gone, we have some kind of wild people on the tree board, and they just start planting trees in the way, and getting all messed up with utilities and the street people. So, so that gets us to this point where I contacted the mayor on behalf of the tree board, and the city attorney, and basically said, can we bring this to a discussion in front of the mayor and the council? Tell them about what our problem is, some of the things we've been brainstorming about. Look for maybe some ideas or some more authority that would allow us to maybe plant some oak trees and some maple trees, and some trees that would grow up and give us more shade in the newer parts of town, that seem like we're not gaining traction. So if you look in your packet, there's a letter back from the city attorney that points out the statutes that create the tree board. And one of the, you know, one of the, the duties of the tree board is to present a comprehensive plan to the council of basically replanting, removal, and disposition of trees and shrubs in public ways, streets, and alleys. And I think when we look almost at, almost at that statute, I tried to, I think it's section two dash fourteen oh two in Article fourteen of the city code. I think what we're basically discussing is we're almost getting down to where maybe one or two words, right there in two dash fourteen oh two, if we added planting, replanting, removal, and disposition, instead of replanting, removal, and disposition, to where we had, or maybe instead of planting, have new plantings, being part of the, not authority, but the responsibility of the tree board to present a comprehensive plan to the, to the council and the mayor of maybe we should add new plantings. I guess that might be one recommendation I could make to, to promote some action that would get a comprehensive plan to you, the council, and the rest of the departments, that obviously we'll wanna work with. And we could just take a map and just, you know, play with it a little bit, put some pins in there, hey, we might like a couple maples here, and a couple oaks there and stuff, and see if that could gain some traction. So, again, I'm trying to think, I'm a formal, I'm a formal councilman, so I, I'm thinking, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, you never wanna hand, one of the rules I was taught, being on this council, was you don't wanna handcuff future councils and stuff. And obviously, you don't wanna, you don't wanna promote bad legislation that, you know, just doesn't make any sense. So I think, you know, when I read the, the city attorney's letter back to the mayor about reading the statute and stuff, I just wondered if that was kind of like a little arrangement we could make, where the, where the tree board would have, submit a comprehensive plan to the council of maybe some suggested plantings, that capital improvement, building and planning, all the utility people could look at. And if a landowner has a big beef with it, too, the landowner needs to be informed of this. If the landowner has a big beef about it, then that's, that's, you know, we don't, we're not, we're not trying to force anything down anybody's throat. So, anyway, that's some of the thoughts we had. I wanted to, these are some of the discussions we've had in tree board meetings, we only meet quarterly. And, you know, we meet with fourth graders and with cookies and lemonade and stuff. So we're not, we're not a too, we're not too heavy duty as far as a little subcommittee for the city and stuff. But I wanted to bring some of these things to the councils, you know, to your notice, and I appreciate your time to consider this stuff. And just want you to think about it, get some opinions, and get back to us as a tree board to see, see if there's anything else we can do to, to try to get some more, some more trees planted in the city to develop these canopies that we, we think we should have.
I was gonna ask you, do you, you mentioned that participation has been down recently with this program. Do you, do you feel that it's, it's a lack of awareness with the public, and especially with new subdivisions? Are contractors not aware of this, or can you, can you elaborate on that?
And that's interesting, too, and you know, you know, Josh, I, I put some stuff in your packet. Basically, I just went to the Lincoln website. Obviously, they, they did a lot of research, a lot of legal work on it. They came up with some street tree design guidelines for their, their city engineer, their building inspection people. You know, it's really, it's really thorough and stuff. And I, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of neat to see if that would work for us. But I, I think still, too, it's a little big, and it's a little heavy-handed, you know? I, I, I still think we want to just kind of work and make this really flexible. And, you know, maybe that's, and maybe that's why I'm here, too, is to try to get some, some publicity, because, you know, maybe I can talk Amanda into putting this in the paper, and hopefully that's gonna help. Maybe I should yell out, my gosh, you know, nobody plants trees anymore, or just scorched earth policy, and sort of, you know, yell some big headline, might make the front of the Independent. But it just seemed, it just seemed, you know, if we took chainsaws out and, you know, started going crazy with those, maybe that would get some publicity. But, you know, maybe that's one of my reasons why I'm here, addressing you, is that maybe this will get some traction, and people will realize, you know, they can use this relief program. One of the, one of the things, you know, maybe we, we've seen in the past is what happened, is some of the developers have used this, when they, when they developed, like, say, out at Evergreen, they got a bunch of the, like, the Bradford pears and Cleveland's and stuff, and smaller trees. They really didn't go for the oaks and the maples, the slow growers, the big, eventually big shade trees. And so they took advantage of the program, they got some trees growing fast, and kind of printed up Evergreen quick to sell some houses. But in the past, what we've seen is nobody's really taken us too serious on the, on the maples and stuff and the oaks. And for us, for us tree-type people, you know, every, like, talking to our old graves and people like that is, we want, we really would like more maples in town, and more color and stuff in the fall, for the fall foliage and stuff. It's just really pretty. So it's not, it's not that this thing has lost traction or never been used, but I'll bet there's years where, you know, Marilyn, Marilyn and Debbie could probably tell you, if they looked in the past, that, gosh, maybe if we allocated a thousand dollars for going fifty-fifty with landowners, I'll bet we didn't spend two hundred bucks. Or maybe some years, nothing. Or maybe some years, nothing, you know, because these, these relief, uh, applications would come by the tree board. And so, it just never, it just never really took off. And, uh, so publicity-wise, I don't, I don't know. Maybe, you know, uh, when we get together with the fourth graders at Arbor Day, get them all at Sealing and tell them to go home and they have to plant it or they can't come back to school. You know, we, we, we try to come up with all these creative ways, so. But, but, you know, in all seriousness, um, it would be good for the town and, uh, trying to talk, trying to talk the, the people in the new part of town that have just spent, you know, a lot of money on their, on their home and, and their lawn and stuff. And then, you know, trying to talk them into some trees if they don't like raking leaves and, and they don't want their house behind some big tree. Well, that's, you know, that's a matter of opinion. It's kind of like art and music. I mean, it's, it really is a personal matter of opinion. But there are some facts that make some sense, like that article in the Lincoln Journal. Um, you know, if you, if you think about our courthouse square, a lot of people like our courthouse square because of the trees. A lot of people like the older parts of town and stuff and the pretty old houses because of the trees that are there, too. And so, um, you know, it's, it is a matter of opinion and stuff. But, hey, we're tree board guys, you got us on the tree board, so we're not, you know, we're not gonna be anti-tree, you know? So, that's why we're here, we're, we're, uh, we're twisting your arm for support of that.
Matt, your, uh, the, the program, though, is for the, the rightways along the street, correct?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is all on city pro- property.
It's all on city property.
Yeah.
So, well, and I, I'm curious how much of that comes in to play. I mean, like, my own home, I'm more interested because of the way my house is set, planting in my backyard where the sun is all the time versus the rightway on the street where.
Right, and, and, and we're, and we're interested in, in someday shading the street in front of your house. Tell, tell what that article alludes to, to, to shade the concrete and so we don't have these, uh, heat, heat islands, is what they use for the term in that article and stuff. And like I said, I didn't, um, thank you. Uh, Josh asked me if we wanted to bring this up on this agenda tonight and stuff. I had no idea they were gonna, uh, print this article, so it was just, I was just throwing them through.
Take credit for that, Matt.
No, I can't do that, right?
Let us know how much power you wield.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, yeah, yeah, so. So, anyway, that's.
Okay, in a second, yeah, I'll go, do you, Josh, Matt?
Well, I, I think the big thing is ju- just to get the general public to understand that that's there and available. Because I think there's a lot of, a lot of people don't realize that, uh, tree board will do that.
Yeah, right.
Cause I, I just planted two trees in my, in my front yard, so I was glad to see it.
Do you wanna refund now?
Yeah, here's the application right here. Then you go to the city's website, you know, and we'd appreciate the support from everybody.
Ellen?
In the newer developments, wanting the larger maple trees, et cetera, are the rightways sufficient to accommodate those trees? Or, I mean, do we have a space problem, is that?
I, I think it's the same as, the, I think the rightaways are, are similar to the way they've always been, you know, they.
The whole downtown area is forty-foot rightway, which leaves about a twenty-five foot span between the, a twenty-foot span between the sidewalks and, and that back curve. One of my new subdivisions, we have, uh, it's probably about twelve to thirteen foot behind curve. Uh, and part of that's taken up a foot for the sidewalk. So, it leaves a pretty limited space, which is really good for utilities, for the new block.
Well, that's.
Is that an issue, then?
Yeah, obviously it is, yeah.
Well, it, it kind of depends on the tree. Um, if you got trees that have big tablets or whatever, and you're, then you're gonna get trees into the utility. But the other side of it is, you're gonna have deep fixing or sidewalks all the time. I'm a big proponent of, uh, of the trees, um, certainly from a building standpoint, I'll let people know. And when subdivisions come in and recommend that they put the planting of the trees that are yards into covenants, um, it kind of catches twenty-one. I, I like to see the trees there, but it does cause us a grief.
So, there's no way to be able to help homeowners who wanna put trees on their own property?
Well, that would be my next suggestion as to how we could educate people and put together a program that would maybe put trees into the front yards and have the canopies come close to the tree, to their gardens.
That's kind of what my, what I was alluding to, you know, like, this is for just that rightway space, which is not. I mean, they, they planted them in our, out there on Augusta, and I think, I don't know who, who did it. I didn't ask how they planted it. All of a sudden, one rainy October afternoon, there's a guy out there drilling holes in everybody's yard and putting trees in. So, I assume, uh, I think Goings was still the owner then. Goings probably paid to have those put in as part of the agreement. But, you know, it's like, like Ellen said, being able, if there's a program available to where, you know, street side, so it's not my backyard, but street side, you know, being able to have the same scenario of going fifty-fifty with the city to get them on that side of the street. Cause you put a big oak out there and whether it's in that little, I refer to it as a terrace. If it's in the terrace area or if it's in my actual front yard, you know, when that thing grows and you get that, whatever the canopy is, that's gotta be what, thirty bud? On a, on an oak?
Oak is fifty.
You know, you're still gonna get what you want, even if you had planted it out in the rightway.
Yeah, no, and, and I stand corrected, John, you know, I appreciate John's input and stuff to tell us that the, the rightaways aren't there as large as they used to be. And that, you know, that totally makes sense. But I don't, you know, we're, we're a bunch of cheap guys on the tree board and stuff. So, I, I look, I, I think about the dollar bills of, um, what we might be looking at if we just said, we're gonna help, um, you know, going, going into people's yards. Because I, you know, I, I can see where some people spend a lot of money on landscaping and, you know, one, one person could come in and can wipe out our seven hundred fifty, you know, thousand-dollar yearly budget. So, um.
Seven hundred fifty to a thousand, right?
Yeah, yeah, seven, seven hundred fifty to a thousand, yeah. Yeah, so, 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 um, we still wanna stay on the cheap side.
Yeah, well, but that's all manageable from the standpoint of, you're allowed, you know, one application, one tree, whatever, you know?
Yeah.
That's all manageable, it's a matter of where, where it has to be planted. You know, if we, if we wanna, the, the city to continue to, uh, encourage the planting of trees, I don't think we can limit it to the rightway.
Yeah, I mean, John, I, can you add something to that?
Uh, I just wanted to mention that we are, we are not keeping up. Uh, we can down or have, uh, Mel cut more trees down than we're putting. So, we're losing, we are losing ground in, in the situation year by year.
And, and, and obviously, too, and, and I know everybody's familiar, that we're, we're, uh, we're under the gun with the Emerald Ash Board, too, coming. So, so we know as a state what our population is with ash trees and we know what it's gonna do to communities. And, and, you know, for street departments and, and cities, you know, what it's gonna cost to, to take those, those down. So, um, we're worried about when that Emerald Ash Board finally does hit our, hit our head with.
Well, and one thing, too, and if the council wanted to direct the city attorney, I mean, you can look at an ordinance that would be a little bit broader than what you currently have that might cover the yards, but, you know, it could be done in a way where you're very specific about the types of trees. You know, if you're looking for a particular effect, like a canopy effect, um, you know, then you, then you wanna limit it, I assume, to oaks or, you know, whatever the trees that would qualify.
I think, yeah, I think the, I think the buzzwords are oaks and, and maples and linens, you know, the bigger trees. Because I, you have to take ash out, you know?
And you could always, and, and it could always be drafted in a way that limits it to one per household. And, and you can see what the interest is and maybe you come back, if that were to be put into effect, you come back and say, hey, we've had a huge demand for this. And maybe you focus on developments that are only a year old or less. Or something, so you're really hitting the newer, the newer areas of town in particular that are looking to, um, to do that. Or replacing in, in existing tree that might be taken down.
Well, I, I think that, I think that really sums up our discussion really well. But the, the other thing I, I really wanna emphasize is we wanna work with city employees, um, Mel, Rich, his, his people, John, uh, the electric department, the water department. We wanna work very closely with them. Uh, we have one, one resident right now that's interested in, in doing some decorating underneath the water tower. Well, you start looking at all the stuff that's underneath the water tower, it's, you know, it's a, it's a pretty tight spot. So, I just, I just want, whatever we do, do frame, the comprehensive plan that, yeah, the council gets a good look at it. But I think city employees need a really good look at this, this, this comprehensive plan for planning, too.
I imagine in that, in whatever that, that the draft ends up looking like, um, you know, and you mentioned for future tree boards and councils.
Future councils and tree boards, yeah.
We can always put a requirement that, you know, you know, to be con- consultation with, with the appropriate utility employees. Are we, there's always language that can be added if we wanted to add on that path. But before I ask if anyone wants to make a motion, Kelly, did you wanna weigh in on this?
Well, I wanted this discussion to take place first before I try to figure out an ordinance for what you want. And so, I mean, right now, the ordinance requires the tree board to develop this comprehensive tree plan and, and update it annually. So, I'm curious, ask it, you know, has that been done or?
No, the only, the only thing we're doing is minutes, you know? And so, in our minutes, sort of typically, we have a list of problem trees, we go and look at them and, uh, it's, and the decision is trim them, leave them alone or remove them. And that's, that's really about, that's about it. I mean, that, as far as a comprehensive plan, you could just look back at our minutes and, and then our participation in other, other events. So, we don't have, we've never, I, I know in the past, um, the tree board has worked with, uh, um, State Arboretum and Nebraska Forest Service to do some inventories of, you know, the number of ash trees and maples and oaks in town and stuff. That's been done a couple times, you know, and it's, that's very involved to do something like that. But as far as coming with a map, you know, and, and having some pins and some suggested places where we'd like to plant some stuff, no, we've never, not that I, not that I know of. I've never, uh, heard of anybody approaching the council with that, so.
Is that something that?
Oh, I, I think we'd be all over that, I really, I really.
So, maybe the next step would be is to have, have you, the tree board meet and, and discuss what a comprehensive plan might look like. And then bringing that to the council for consideration. And then as an addendum to that, we could possibly have then, then ordinance that would be drafted to reflect what's in that plan and obviously be maybe in greater detail. But, um, as a second step to that process, would that kind of get you to where you think we need to be?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Does that sound okay then?
No, yeah, and, and I just consider, like I said, I wanted to, I wanted to bring up these issues to represent the rest of the tree board and, and their comments and stuff. But I, I always kind of considered this might be kind of a brainstorming session.
Mel, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I wanna just kind of pass on some information I've found and, and get back with what Matt's talking about. I know in two thousand seven, I, um, with the help of the Nebraska Forest Service and people, we did do a tree survey. We did all city rightway, trees, parks, cemeteries, everywhere. We come up with different varieties of trees, what's planted there, so we can kind of get more diversified in the town. So, in case this Emerald Ash Board's coming, any type of disease, we're not wiped out. You know, we got diversified trees around town. That's what we're, we've been working on for several years. We have a list of trees, I think we wanna add to it, so we have more variety for people, if we get this going more, more variety for people to select from, um.
So, it's a good thing we didn't plant all, all ash trees down that street.
Well, it's, but, it's, but, this is off the record, Amanda. But, um, I remember when Tony was, when they were building the new library and Tony called me up and I was on, I was on the tree board then and he said, what should we plant around the library parking lot? I said, whatever you do, just plant a variety. So, they planted all ash trees. So, you know, a lot of times your recommendations, you know, out the window, but, you know, you try, you try your best. Hey, it's, it's not a perfect sport, you know?
No, but there is, there's a lot of benefits to trees. They have done studies and there's software where they put a money value to trees. But here's some, some facts here that's, that I've found, um, with a variety of studies, cities have a great deal of savings and benefits from calculating tree canopy's worth, including reducing storm runoff, you know, we've had some issues on storm runoff and everything. So, that, if you get that big canopy, that helps reduce this storm water and, uh, slows down the rain. Lowering the summer air temperatures, reducing air pollution, reducing heating and cooling systems and your cost. Uh, reducing, uh, CO2, carbon dioxide, enhancing your property. And, um, just the well-being and improvement of your property. It also provides cleaner water, uh, it promotes the clean air as well as clean water. And, uh, in our forest system, it's a natural reservoir and also a storm water management system when you have tree. Uh, energy and water conservation, uh, when you place trees in strategically locations, like maybe closer to the homes around your homes, they can provide, uh, up to fifty percent of air conditioning needs for your homes. Uh, especially if you plant them on the south and west side where the sun is most prominent. The shade trees provide slow evaporation from your lawns, which covers your lawns and reduces the need of water. Resale value of your property. Trees can go a long ways towards improving your home landscape, put that trees in your landscaping. Mature trees can add between ten and twenty percent of your home's property values. And one kind of interesting information here, or community impact, neighborhoods with lots of trees statistically are subject to lower crime. They have less aggressive drivers. Uh, the presence of trees also boosts concentration of school-aged children as well as providing a place to play. And just, um, just kind of a well-being, seeing trees and, and potential there for improvements of your properties. Just some information I kind of wanted to pass along to you guys.
Thanks, Mel. John, do you have that or we did?
Yeah, I was just gonna add a couple of things, I'd say, um, you know, a couple of things that we can look at. We, in the past, when we, when we noticed that there was areas where we didn't have sidewalk access, we created sidewalk districts. And this couldn't be totally out of the realm of, uh, in your comprehensive plan, only yearly deal to create a new district each year for areas that need improvement on the, on the, uh, on the sidewalks. Um, as far as the funding, you know, if, if somebody comes in and says they wanna plant a big maple or a linden or one of the, the bigger canopy shade trees, maybe we could give them one of the smaller trees to put in the rightway that aren't gonna affect the utilities. The other thing is, whenever we do a new subdivision, we also ask for park fees in lieu of adding additional land for parks. Uh, maybe some of this park fees could go back to the developer in the form of using that money to put trees into the subdivisions. We have some mechanisms out there. Okay.
Thanks, John. Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, it looks like, uh, you'll write the tree board and you can discuss a comprehensive plan, bring that back to the council.
Yep.
And then at that point, we can take a look at that plan and, and upon approval, we can have ordinance drafted that will then reflect what's in the plan as well as anything else that, that the tree board recommends. So, that would be part of a, a program similar to the one that we discussed.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for helping.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, thanks for, uh, helping us organize our ideas and, and your good ideas.
Hey, thanks. All right, that's item number five, we go to item number six. This is, uh, consideration of a resolution limiting parking sixty feet from intersection on streets intersecting with Hillcrest Drive to include, uh, Coltonland Street, Fairlane Avenue, Plainview Avenue, Sunrise Drive and East Ridge Drive. John?
Yeah, when we last met, we, you were given the task of looking at the, uh, the streets involved, intersecting in the Hillcrest there and the, and the parking issues that were associated with turning to, to the west. And taking a look at it, uh, if we use the twenty-foot radius, basically, it ends up being about twenty-three feet to where the stop sign is and another sixty feet back, which we've used as, as kind of a quasi-standard. We've kind of taken care of most of the turn signals, uh, problems in the other parts of town. So, instead of going s- a hundred feet, I recommend that we go sixty feet. I wrote the resolution to include Coltonland, Fairlane, Plainview, Sunrise and East Ridge. Looking into this, uh, in fact, I wouldn't go too far before Mel brought it to my light. Plainview and Sunrise already have no parking on the west side of the streets, all the way down the block. So, this resolution, uh, if it passed as is, would open up parking for further away down, down Sunrise and Parkview. If you decide to want to, um, go ahead with the resolution, we can exclude those as, as part of the deal and, and the resolution. It would be my recommendation that we make them all uniform. It would be my recommendation that we make them all uniform. Um, and I believe, uh, the other, the other thing about marking it down a hundred feet, then we start skipping driveways. And I didn't wanna get into that so much. Um, sometimes the hundred feet ends up on part of the curb and part of the driveway. And if we go sixty feet, that pretty much takes care of the whole frontage on, on one lot, the corner lot that, that's on the corner of Hillcrest and Fairlane or Hillcrest or Plainview or Hillcrest or East Ridge, but it does provide the stacking of about three and a half to four cars without interference from traffic, so.
Just to be clear though, this, there are streets that currently have no parking on one side, and this would then make that?
There's good bank parking on one side sixty feet back on both sides.
Okay, I'm not, the council may wanna discuss that, cause I, my only concern is that if the, if the concern is, is having too much congestion, I wonder if it would make sense to do this in two steps, one being do just keep the no parking that's already in place, and the other side have your sixty feet of no parking and see if that addresses the issue, as opposed to eliminating that no parking on one side and only having it sixty feet on both sides. If there's still an issue with congestion, it's gonna be hard to identify what exactly is the issue, because we're changing two variables now instead of just one on those streets.
But it's on the same side of the street.
Right, but you're saying is, so if this is the two sides of the street, this side currently is, let's say, is no parking anywhere, correct?
No parking anywhere.
And this side, we're gonna say, you're gonna have no parking, um, sixty feet?
No. The side that has no parking anywhere will be the side that we're reducing it to sixty feet on. It's only on the west side of the street where you're making a right-hand turn off these streets where you have the problem that, with the car trying to turn.
So we're gonna allow more parking?
We'll pick up additional parking.
Is that the intent of what council wants to do, I guess is my?
Well, I didn't know if that was the intent, but that's the way I wrote the, the, uh, resolution and this resolution, if passed, would preclude previous resolutions.
Sure.
If, if you want to keep the parking the way it is, then we can pass the resolution with the exception of Plainview and Hillcrest, so I'm just writing them in resolution.
Okay, I just, if I'm not making my concern clear, I, I can sure elaborate further.
I was gonna say, the, the issue at last, council meeting that we discussed, uh, when the resident was in here, is the fact that because there is parking allowed on apparently three of the five streets, it essentially becomes one lane for turning in and turning out. And so the discussion was to remove parking from the corner back, and we said a hundred feet, he's now suggesting sixty feet.
Okay.
So that, that there is, you don't, you don't create a one-lane street at the corner, that, that would always be open.
And I, I get that, except on the one side where you couldn't park at all, you was, you'll now be able to park at the sixty-foot.
After sixty-foot that side.
I just wanna make sure that's clear, cause I don't, I, I guess that would be.
Dean?
Someone's, yeah, you live over there, Dean, what do you?
I would, I would think that would be acceptable to build, build that route, uh.
Which route?
To allow the, just go back sixty foot on each street and allow the parking on the streets and have no parking on the, on the whichever side.
On the west side.
Okay, so you're okay with this resolution, okay?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that there wasn't an interruption.
And the only reason I did that is because we were talking about making them all uniform, for sure. Cause at first we just talked about East Ridge and, and I think I brought it up and said, well, we had the same problems on, on the other streets, and at the time I didn't know we don't have that problem.
And those streets just have signs that say no parking, there's, they're not painted red?
They're not painted at all, and I would suggest that we just put a small sign up on one end and the rest of the signs are paint. Concrete.
For the sixty feet?
I think, I think just from what I'm seeing, I think that would help immensely.
Well, and being, being unsure, because what if it doesn't solve the problem doing sixty-sixty? I, I like your idea of painting, don't put up a sign.
No, I, I don't like the change. We've got enough signs, people don't.
Yeah, we don't need more signs of.
Problem, I see if you go too far, like you say, you're gonna cover up some driveways and, and, and some people, they have about two parking places in their drive and nowhere else to park, so.
Do you feel that if people are now parking beyond the sixty feet on the one side where you currently can, that still gives you enough room to get by if people are parking on, on both sides?
I, I think so.
Okay, cause I just don't know, I, my only concern would be are you creating a bottleneck just farther down?
Well, we haven't had the bottleneck on Coltonland, Fairlane or East Ridge.
Okay.
And now all those streets are the same with.
Okay.
Yeah.
We really want people feeling hell on down the streets.
Sure.
Just, we just wanna turn it into a Wesleyan area, but.
Just from what I've seen during, during the ballgames and stuff, there, there'll be maybe two cars out on the street waiting to pull in while one pulls out, so if you got, you know, sixty foot there, I think that should alleviate most of them.
I trust you'll keep an eye on this if this were to pass, and kinda come back maybe with some suggestions if there's any issues. Okay. Are there any questions, I guess, from the council or comments on this item? Otherwise, I would ask if, uh, someone like to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce it.
All right. The, uh, resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty fifteen dash thirteen. Would, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
No move.
Second.
Give a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
And the fairer motion makes you get red spikes, should we hand social security?
And we have item number seven. This is a consideration of a resolution improving closing Highway fifteen and the north lane of Highway thirty-four for the Fourth of July festivities. John, do you wanna take this?
This is pretty much a housekeeping issue that we do every year at this time for the parade. Uh, the state was mandated that we'd get a parade and that we'd make a closure of the, of the street during the parade, so that it'd be the closing of Highway fifteen at the intersection of Surry Street and Highway fifteen and the closure of the north lanes along Highway thirty-four between fourth and sixth.
Any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I would ask someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce it.
Did you get something? Okay. The resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty fifteen dash fourteen. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Second.
Give a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
And the fairer motion makes you get red spikes, should we hand social security?
All right, John Wall, you're up there. Do you wanna give us the capital projects update?
Okay. Administration has been working with the vendor on the code codification process. We're working on the religion process. Wage and benefit comparability, um, new TIF application are coming in. CIP projects, walking trail, I think, we're getting ready to finalize the actual alignment. We're going into the property procurement stages next. Uh, Mel and myself met with the Ag Board, which is the last piece of property that fulfilled the alignment, um, last night, and I think we met with a great deal of success. Um, Great Plains is continuing their, their build-out, uh, the fiber. Um, it's a plan review. The County Justice Center is, um, kinda going forward. They stopped working on it for a while, and yesterday they said, we need our permit, you better start working on it again, so we do. Uh, C C I P info for, uh, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen and surplus property list for the auction. Uh, street department is assisting on, uh, Cedar and Jackson street projects as well as street repairs. We finished up building a street repair on East Surry Street. Now we're going into a mow, mowing function when the rain allows. Electric department's working on three-phase projects scheduled for replacement. They put in a new transformer bank at the new big cop location. And working on the swimming pool lighting. Water waste department finished up the pool repairs. It's got water in it and used re-circulating as intended. Uh, and also doing repairs on the UV lights and the digester. Parker Recs Department just finished up the high school baseball district tournament last week on Park, and I believe there was also a Concordia tournament there as well.
Thanks, John. Any questions or comments from the council?
John, as far as the, uh, walking trail?
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know your processes and what you're in, but I'd suggest contacting, uh, Jessica Tainsky again as far as your plans with this property. Before you finalize.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to accept the report.
Someone?
Second.
A motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Please, fairer motion makes you get red spikes, should we hand social security?
I'm gonna go back real quick to item seven. Um, we had the, the resolution that was approved, um, for the closing, and just to clarify, for item seven A, that's the consideration of approval of a, of a parade permit, which includes the closing of the highway, so just for housekeeping purposes, I'd entertain a motion to, um, approve, uh, the parade permit. The closing of Highway fifteen at the intersection of Surry Street and Highway fifteen and closure of the north lane of Highway thirty-four between fourth and sixth streets.
Someone?
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
And the fairer motion makes you get red spikes, should we hand social security?
All right, item nine, feature requests for council agenda items or administrative action. Not seeing any. We'll go ahead to item number ten. We have the Fourth of July, I'm the Fourth of July, and Charles, do you have anything up there?
Uh, two things, yeah. Uh, Tuesday, June second is the Fourth of July kickoff luncheon. Uh, everybody is invited, just be sure our SVP, so we get a good food count at Colton Chamber office. Uh, Wednesday, June seventeenth, um, is our waste compact meeting at City Hall in Milford at seven PM. I typically attend that and will not be able to attend that day, so, um, if somebody knows they've got the availability on there, it's important to have a representative, because there are weighted votes, and if Seubert and or Creed doesn't show up, it makes it harder for them to conduct business.
Thank you, Charles. That would conclude our announcements. Item eleven, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Please, fairer motion makes you get red spikes, should we hand social security?
Almost missed it, baby.